One nation under God, into this little, little arena of justice for all.
Well, I guess we have our budget hearing.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have a ton to say, there's not a ton of changes or anything. That is, if you look at the last page, just wanted to point out, I put down where our fund balances have been, just to give you a general idea of what a new teacher costs, once you tackle it, because sometimes a person forgets how much he'd get for helping dental and all of that. And then on the bottom part, just a little thing, that the energy loans are done, that we've had. And the capital outlays we took in, so the first building project will be done, we'll make our last payment December of 2025, and the other one will be done in December of 2035. Otherwise, budget, there's not a whole, you know, besides updating with all the new salaries and everything. There's not a ton of, ton of changes from one year to the next. As our funds will be running out, so. And use a capital outlay sum to also help balance out the general like we had to do this year. I guess I encourage, if there's any questions ever, just to email me, call me, contact me.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions right now?
If there's anything more you'd like to see as well.
Brian, did you hear of anything on community forum? Anybody contact you?
No, I haven't had anybody contact.
Leslie, maybe somebody contacted me. So, on to the next fun part. The reorganization of the Board of Education. So, do I need, how do I do this, Amy? You gotta remind me.
So, I guess I kinda take over then.
Yep.
We'll have the adjournment of the 2023, 2024 Board. I want to thank Jim for everything he's done. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
And welcome, Terry.
Welcome, Terry.
And Herman too, right?
Yeah, and Herman will be, he could not make it today. That's right. Now, if I could have you read the.
Do I have to do that aloud?
Yep. It's all up to you.
Yes, I do. Public speaking.
Basically, just your hold of office. And now I will take nominations for school board chair.
Make motion for Tara. And second.
Got a motion and a second for Tara. Do I have a motion, second, for either another one or to what's the other? To cease.
Motion to cease.
Terry, second. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. Congratulations, Terry.
Thanks.
And not used to take back.
All right, nominations for vice chair.
Make motion for Ashley. On second.
Have a motion to cease. Terry, all those in favor of Ashley, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion, Terry. Congratulations. All right, committees. Buildings and grounds.
You don't have to have motions, do you?
No. No, I just need you guys to figure out what you want to do.
Jeff wants to be on that one.
Yeah.
And he's already on transportation.
I'd love to hear Herman be on that one.
Okay. Buildings and grounds or transportation?
Both.
In place of you?
Um, in place of Lloyd on buildings and grounds.
Okay.
And in place of me on transportation.
So, we're going Herman. So, there's a here, huh? Okay. Vice chair, you'll be on. All right, so buildings and ground will be Mason, Jamie, and Herman. Transportation will be Mason, Herman, and Jeff. Negotiations, I will stay on that one.
I have a volunteer coming back on that one.
Okay. Strategic planning, I'll take Jim off of that one. I'll stay on that one, too. You want to go on that one, Ashlyn? Policy.
I would all let Terry take over both of those for Robert.
Okay, is that all right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Moving on. Oh, boy. Core, who wants to be? Core Mid Central is a monthly meeting, or deals with our speech.
Occupational therapy.
Pretty much all our special services. We have people come in for all of those.
It's a cooperative out of.
Where do they?
I'm sorry. Meetings are Thursday, usually the Thursday before our board meetings, like 11:00 in the morning. I mean, I'm already on Mid Central. I was on Core for years, so somebody else wants that.
You just have to attend the meeting, or what?
Yes. And really, it's a call-in meeting. It happens Thursdays at 11:00, 10:00 or 11:00. And you call in, most meetings take a half hour to.
Yeah.
I would do it, except for every Thursday, a direct admission, so I would not be able to do that. I can do it, it's just that if I have a meeting for work, like complex, I mean, I could put it down as recurring and try to make it not, but.
And then you can call me. I mean, if you would have a problem, you can call me, and I can call in, because there's usually a person and then a stuff, like if Brooke, she just texts her, texts me and Jim and asks for us to take it. Okay, okay, so actually.
So, are the superintendents and other people in on those, too? Okay, we'll all be in on those anyway, so if worse comes to worst, I can just.
You, you get paid $60.
I mean.
Every time you call in. It's $60.
Mine only $15.
I forgot to tell you that. It's $60 for a half-hour phone call.
It's the best thing ever. Okay, so I will stay on Mid Central, because I'm hoping that's about over. Unless somebody else wants that. Okay. Conflict of interest declarations.
I'll bring something, I forgot to run some offsite. Do you have an email, so you can have them there?
I have a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, on the second.
Second.
Second by Mason, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion, Terry. Communication and discussion items, administrative reports, business manager.
Then I don't have anything on this, too.
Okay, superintendent, elementary.
Perfect. I'll have you go first.
Okay, all right, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the grant that I'm sure some of you have heard about. So, back in June, a few of us staff members wrote a grant for CTE innovative equipment. And there were some criteria with the grants, like each item we requested had to be at least $1,000, so that was a little different for me to have to find excessive things. We have asked other people in careers, like we had here in Regional Medical Center, write a letter supporting us getting the grant. And so that was submitted back in June. We found out ten days after that, that we were awarded $117,000 for it. So, super exciting. The money came, in case you're wondering, it was from the Department of Education, and that money came from American Rescue Plan and the Federal Perkins Grant. There was $6.4 million awarded to 36 different schools. Some of the items that we ordered, and all this money has to be sent by September, and everything has to be submitted, invoices and proof of payment by the end of September. So, we got skeleton, an Adamage table, which is an amazing the size of a person. It's a real cadaver. You, it's like you're dissecting a person, and they are baby colors, so, yeah, super cool. Will be, and a lot of these items will be shared between high school science, middle school science. Try to incorporate some health science intro to elementary, so I have a lot of plans for these items. And just a lot of stimulators, like a blood pressure simulator, an ankle, knee and ankle sports injury simulator. So, there's 11 different items that we will be purchasing with the grant.
It's awesome. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to talk about post-graduate?
About nationals?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, we were in Houston. Thank goodness we're back, since there was a hurricane there, which was nasty. So, five, Lexi, folks, and I took five students to Houston, Texas, and it was a great experience for those kids to meet students from all over the world. It's international conventions, so there were students that are from China and, and other countries. So, it's a lot of fun for them to be able to meet other, other kids. As far as, as an advisor and as a health science instructor, there was a lot of different reps there for, for health science, so I was able to visit with a lot of people at that school there, so. Yeah, that was a lot of fun, so. Great experience for those kids.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go on, kind of the rest of our service. On behalf of Woolsey West Community, I want to thank Brooke LeGrand and Jim White for your service on the school board, who committed to the school district's not-balance-scene, and wish both the best. And I want to welcome our new board members, Terry and Herman. We're happy you made the decision to get involved with the school district, and we're looking forward to your new ideas and ways that you can make the school even better, so. Excited to have you. Kind of on to the superintendent stuff. The weight room has all moved into, the AC is done. We will just need a few more things. The drywall still needs to go up, we're trying to figure that out. Figuring it out. We got a bid, very expensive, so we're trying to find a different way to do it. And then just need a few racks in there, and then we're good to go. So, we shouldn't have spent too much money in there to make it complete, so should be good. I want to thank our SOLO staff this summer. They've been working extremely hard, and they've gotten all the rooms cleaned. They've been working very, very hard, so we appreciate everything they do for us. We'll talk about this at the end, too, but we did meet with engineer about the playground, football, and track. I think we have a pretty good plan going forward, just kind of got to make some decisions. But everything seems, like it should go in the right direction now, so hopefully we get a good plan going and get going on that. Just tweeting myself, we're going to Aberdeen at the end of the month for Title IX training. There are many, many new rules and regulations passed this year, so we'll end up kind of, kind of update our policies and different stuff like that following it. And I know there's a few regulations that are not going over well with a lot of states. I know there's a lot of states trying to get rid of it, so I'm interested to see what South Dakota does, because I'm looking to stay with all the soup. And then ASBSD conference in Sioux Falls is the eighth and ninth, so that's for administrators and school board members. And if you guys want to go, just let me know, we can figure something out, because it is good. It's, I talked to her about that. Out of all the conferences that you go to, that one has the best speakers, it has the best kind of information, especially for like new school board members, new superintendents. It's really, it's really good information, so. At some point, we're gonna have to probably take a look at adding, at our adding onto the bus barn. We have a lot of equipment that just sits out right now. I've been working with Brian on trying to get kind of that storage area at the end of the bus barn, trying to get that cleaned out. We have most of it cleaned up now, but we're gonna have to put the other bus that we're giving it in there. So, all the rest of our equipment for, I mean, skin loader and everything else like that is still left outside. There's not enough room in there. Even if we could just get like concrete pad and something overhead, at least it would shield it from the rain and snow and stuff like that. But again, we're pressing things right now, so just kind of something we got to think about. And then, yes, was it yesterday? Yeah, yesterday we met. So, Paige Decoff, she's actually originally from Wessington, and she works for the Black Hill Special Services, and I met her while at that county when we were working on our family engagement. So, she came to us and she wants to give us $30,000 from the Family Engagement Center of South Dakota to come and do family engagement at our school. So, kind of what this goes into is there will be leadership committee, so in elementary, there will be two teachers, myself, and then three parents, and we'd like to have it be like one from here on, one from Woolsey, one from Wessington, to where they kind of give ideas and we'll do different things like that. We'll meet a few times during the year, and then we'll do like these parent chats. So, what these parent chats are, is we'll bring random parents in, we just call and ask parents to come in, and they'll answer questions that we want to ask them. So, whether it's about student safety, whether it's just about school in general, just kind of different stuff that we want to know about, that we can think that we can like better ourselves off with. And they do all of it for us, they give us all the data for it. You find a lot of stuff that maybe you wouldn't think of, that parents come in and see. And I think it's just a good idea for us, just to, I mean, with getting $30,000, it's pretty hard not to do it, but I think it just shows parents that we want them here, we want them in the doors, we value their input. And I've seen it through, I've seen it through, we did it for two years, and we had a lot of success with it. And we would actually be the first East River school that would go through the program with them. So, it'd be kind of a good stepping stone for them and stuff like that. So, I know she was in with me and she had some good things to say, so we'd like to move forward with that. And she's gonna kind of give us actual plan next week, and then we can go with that, the next board meeting, and kind of get that rolling. But it would be very, it would be very beneficial, I think it would. So, a lot of, a lot of good stuff that comes away from it. So, and then, tell again.
Well, I met with Brian, Jeremy, probably, except that, um, in June, and worked on transferring the network over. And a couple of things that I'm gonna start working on network-wise, is we're gonna join the state AD, so it helps teachers single sign-on and all cohesive instead of multiple, and it'll be much more secure when we talk about the security of the network and documents and information. So, we're gonna work on that, streamline those services with the state K-12 data center. Like I said, it'll be a transition, but I think it'll be good for everybody involved there. July 1st was my official start date. I'm working on handbook, matching them up, matching it up with policies, and meeting new staff members as they come in every day, which is great, and finalizing the middle school and high school schedule. And then I'm also working on a tech survey for the staff to kind of know, to help plan professional development for the year.
Thank you. Um, we didn't have a Mid Central meeting. Did you, anybody comment for the quarter?
Yeah, it was very short. They just kind of went over that there's not really any changes, and then they're gonna send out their documents or whatever to us, hopefully within the next week. And that was, it was literally like five minutes, so.
Did they have somebody doing that start scene?
They did not talk about that.
All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Terry. Second. Second by Ashley, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. Motion, Terry. Can we make one motion rather than this?
Yes, you have done that in the past. I really meant to print this in color, and I grabbed, pushed the color button. Just a couple of things I want to, besides a lot of it, you know, being the same thing, and you guys can go through those. I did on, forgot to put on 12.25 that that would be, I'll look it up for sure, but it's like 64 cents. And then I wrote it down, and I looked it in my room. And then I was just going by the states, what the state was doing for state mileage rate, which then is .655 for if they use their own vehicle, and if we have a vehicle, but they don't want to use it, 29.5 cents. So, just wanted to let you guys know what those were.
Motion.
And then you're right.
Well, and then 1228, I'm just suggesting maybe go up. We haven't gone up in admission prices for a while, so maybe going up a dollar for each of those, and then $10 for the pass. School lunch, we always seem to have to go up 10 cents for my application and everything, so I was just gonna go up another 10 cents. I was making a suggestion to do, go up $10 for the preschool rates, because it's been a long time since we've done anything there. And then for the substitute pay, I have on there what we have been, and maybe going up another $10 on each of those, just to.
Right now, we are on the low end for substitutes, so going up to that 10, we're still under, but it's a little more competitive than it has been.
And then if you have any questions about the rest of the stuff.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve 12? Through 12.32 with the recommended recommendations. Motion. Motion by Ashley, I'll say. Second by Terry, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side. Motion, Terry. New and unfinished business, surplus old track hurdles.
Forgot that, was I waiting for the next question? Okay.
We're gonna have to go through that all.
Okay, so we'll just do the track.
We'll do that later.
The whole, there's some like ancient track hurdles out there. So, I just wanted to give those. I think Bishop was just gonna tear them apart and take, if it's metal parts, take them in the back, and I don't know. Otherwise, we're just.
Okay, I have a motion to surplus old track hurdles.
Yeah, surplus them or scrap them?
Well, surplus them, but then they're gonna be scrapped.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie. Terry, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same side.
We'll gain a little bit of money that.
13.2, the policies, we are going to push the JCA open enrollment until next month. Did I make any of those changes?
Yeah, you just want to do the staff hiring real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, do they have this one?
No.
Okay, just want to pass this one. So, the only thing that's getting changed on this one, so for so the only thing that's getting changed on it is two of them. So, what it was before was no candidates, you'd be hired without personal interview. And whenever possible, the candidate will be interviewed by a committee consisting of a board member administrator and then a certified staff member. So, instead of having to have a board member there, we'd like to have a board member there, but again, I kind of talked with them, have a moment with it. There's some of those that you guys probably don't need to be a part of, that probably don't get anything out of, whether it's paraprofessionals or custodians or anything like that. There's not really much to ask. So, as much as we can, we'll try to, but I know like, even like this next week, I got six interviews for paras, and try to ask you guys to come in when you're working and stuff like that. I don't think it's fair to you guys, so. That's only the really big change on there, and then the bottom part, too.
Just adding contingent.
Yeah, just adding contingent with the actual contract, so they gotta get their background checked and different stuff like that before we can officially get done on contracts. And then I did send out the lockdown procedures to everyone. So, before, it was just kind of seven step, it was like seven things, and it really didn't state, it just said lockdown, and there was no kind of specifics to it. So, pretty much what I'm going to implement is, is three things. So, it's a shelter in place, and so this is just where like outside door to the lock, and students cannot go outside. So, I think of if there is a shooting here on or something like that, and there's been no police call or anything like that, we go and do a shelter in place. We're safe, but we just want to make sure that we're not outside, if anything happened, high, high-speed car chase, anything like that, that we get called. Soft lockdown, so this would be like usually what we would do, if we did like a drill, so we do a soft lockdown. So, just working on getting the doors locked, making sure the windows are covered, then keeping students away, still do your classroom stuff, but just making sure we're locked down, people don't know. Nobody down the hallway is moving around, and then when we go into hard lockdown, that's a serious one. So, it helps having kind of those three criteria to where teachers know exactly what's going on, and there's no questions asked, you know, it's, you know exactly what's going on, and then there's in there, we'll all send an email out to exactly what's going on and stuff like that. Red, green cards, whether we're good to go or they're not good to go, if they have all their students or not. And again, I'll go through this with the whole staff. We have our cons services, but it just is, it's just easy for the teachers to understand, and they know exactly what's going on. It's not like, hey, we're in lockdown, and they have no idea if it's something really bad's happening, or if it's a drill or something like that, so. Just doing that, and I am big on safety, so that is, I mean, that was kind of number one when I came in, I just wanted to make sure we're safe and we have a plan. Hopefully, nothing happens, but at least we have a plan in place that keeps students safe. And then the last one, so, pardon me, not about this one.
I don't know. Eligibility, we looked at that policy and interest, yeah.
So, okay, I'll call it. So, the problem right now is our handbooks and our policies do not line up. So, when a parent comes and says, well, this is in the policy, and then we tell them, well, it's in the handbook, there's no grounds to stand on if something happens. So, you're pretty much having to either follow one or the other, or having to try and do both at the same time, which is not fair, you know, I just don't, I mean, it just can't happen. So, we're trying as much as we can to line up, and this was the first one we kind of found right away, to have all the handbooks and then have the policies match up to where if you look in one place, or if you're looking at multiple places, it says the same thing, and there's no confusion when people are asking or there's questions. So, that's kind of our reasoning behind it right now, and there's still more that we need to go through, but this is kind of the first one that we found, so.
So, if you look at the eligibility there, well, compile the grades on a weekly basis, so Wednesday's at 8:00 a.m. We'll do a check. It will start the third week of each quarter, so that gives them two and a half weeks or two weeks. And then we'll start at 8:00 a.m. If there is an F in anybody's grade, they will get a probation period, so they'll basically get a communication with me and the teacher, and hopefully we can develop a plan to have that F, not an F after probation, but if it is an F after one week of probation, then they would remain in, they would be ineligible at that point.
But if it is an F after one week of probation, then they would remain in, they would be ineligible at that point. During the probation period, they can still participate. They get one probation week per quarter. Okay, so after that, there's no probation. So if I had had an F in math, um, and have an probation for one week and the next week I had an F in social studies, there's no probation for the social studies. You, you will serve your ineligibility for a week and then we'll check again. And if you're eligible after that point, you're fine. If you're not, you will remain ineligible until, um, that grade is not an F. Um, let's see here. If school's canceled on the grade check, it'll be done the next regular day. And then there is one line that we talked about changing there. Instead of, if students are ineligible, they will be allowed to travel with the team, but they must remain in street clothes. And ineligible student managers will not travel with the team. Trying to make them accountable and in their participation. I have the dates of the grade checks listed in the policy there. So then you can put them in the calendar and make sure that it's followed. And, um, let's see, some of that hasn't changed. Um, I think we did change to ten AM instead of noon. That they have to be in school to participate. That's not really an eligibility, but it was listed in the eligibility, um, part of the policy, so. It is, it's just that that's what they do with deal of grades, so. Any questions on that? Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Um, thirteen point three resignation. Do you have it?
I have a copy too.
Um...
Oh, you gotta read them off, uh...
Good afternoon, Mr. Donovan. I am the junior head volleyball coach from Wilsley-Westington. I just recently come. Do we wanna write this?
I don't, forget, you might not.
With that being said, I don't think I can coach. With my job being in hereon, there's a lot of changes happening, I'm also the main teacher also, so I feel I need to be there to help as much as I can. Um, I am so sorry, thank you for your standing, Ronnie Burke. Um, dear Mr. Donovan and Mrs. Tweet, I hope this letter finds you well. It is with mixed emotions that I write to inform you of my decision to resign from my position as middle school English history teacher at Wilsley-Westington effective immediately. This resignation comes after much deliberation and reflection. Over the past year, I have had the privilege of being a part of the Wilsley-Westington community. Working alongside dedicated colleagues and engaging with students has been a truly rewarding experience. The support and camaraderie, camaraderie, I have received here have contributed significantly to my professional growth and development, for which I am sincerely grateful. However, after careful consideration of my career goals and personal aspirations, I have decided to pursue a different path that aligns more closely with my long-term objectives. While this decision was not easy, I am confident it is the right one for me at this point in my career. Thank you once again for the opportunity to be a part of Wilsley-Westington community. I will cherish the memories and relationships formed during my time here. Please let me know if there's anything you need from me at this time, sincerely overdue a cool. Do I have a motion to accept Olivia and Ronnie's resignation?
Motion.
Motion by Ashley. Second. By Mason. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those in favor say aye. Motion carried, let's thank them for their time. Alright, contracts, Lexi Hook, STEM advisor and Cora Hook, egg donor.
I should put slash, I thought they advised.
I thought they advised. With Priesta?
Yes.
And it was advisors or is there a head advisor, head advisor?
Well, of course, head, one for me.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Carrie, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those in favor say aye. Motion carried, open enrollments.
Do you wanna push this one? Look at that policy.
It don't matter, someone will learn just anxious.
Okay, well, I'm good with accepting that, do you want to roll?
I have six open enrollments that, um, were suggested to approve. Three are kindergarten, one fourth, one sixth, and one.
Okay, three kindergarten, one fourth?
Yeah, one sixth, one. That's what we have at this point.
Then a motion to approve six open enrollments. Motion. Motion by Ashley. Second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Motion carried. RFP and construction manager.
Do you wanna follow this one?
Go ahead, I'll just chime in.
Okay, so we met with ERG and ESPN for engineers. And they happen to be two separate entities, correct? So Pitts would be the construction manager and then we will have to decide on ESPN or DGR. Um, both their proposals are the same. The only thing that kinda stood out to me was DGR and they have, and this is why it stood out, because he has worked with a lot of smaller communities to find their budget and be able to make it work. Um, ESPN didn't really mention any of that stuff, they'd kinda done bigger projects where they had a lot of money. Um, ERG really, that's kinda what they hit the, I mean, they really hit on that. Um, and that's kinda the only thing that really stood out. I don't know if you have anything different.
I, I've worked with, I, I was, I'm just an audience member here, but I, I liked how he talked about when we brought up using local help for as much as he could. He was totally open for that, I mean, um...
That was DGR.
Uh, DGR, yeah. I, I wasn't in on the ESPN meeting, so I can always speak on the ERG.
Yeah, so like Leslie and Amy were in on that as well. And I, for me, I think that's the biggest thing is if we can get something to where they can work with our budget and they've done it before in other smaller schools who don't have a big budget and still made their projects work, I think that would be the way it all, be my recommendation.
It was recommended to start a new, um, committee instead of track football field. I have a, what, 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 what was the terminology that we used? Outdoor recreation committee, that mean, 'cause it... Something, activities, activities.
Because play, uh, facilities, uh, recreation facility.
Right.
So...
I never read this stuff.
Very little of the last committee addressed the playground, you know, and, um, and when we brought up, you know, maybe one point eight million, he thought we could really get to that with the ideas that we brought up, and that would be a track and a playground and a football field. So, um, and he had ideas already on how we're gonna make that happen, that was about in football.
Yeah.
Yeah, for fun reasons.
And I think, I mean, the playground, I, I don't think that was put out enough. I mean, that would be something for me, would be a top priority, just 'cause I think our community and our kids need it. Um, especially here, I mean, we have a good little one right here, but again, how much can our little kids and little kindergartners and first graders really do all that stuff? So, I mean, I think that's again, making that a priority as well. Um, and hopefully that goes over well with everybody and just understands what we wanna do with it, so.
I know it was talked about appointing committee members. Appointing committee members that are, want this project to succeed and determine a way forward for it to happen. Instead of opening it up, um, you know, get, get a committee that wants to go forward and is willing to find a way forward. Um, if that, you can submit that proposal to the committee, community, from, communities from there. Um, but it's up to you guys to figure out who would be the right people to, to lead that charge. Um, you know, we have, December twenty-five will creep up in a hurry. And if we can't get a vote in November, this November, um, it'd be nice to at least have that, what we talked about, in case that failed, we'd still have time to get things ready for the April vote if we had to make some alterations to it, so. But both ERG and Pitts could give us real-time numbers on what actual cost would be instead of the makeup numbers that we were dealing with before. And one point eight definitely seemed like a reasonable number that they thought we could get to. And that would be sixty percent of our current capital on the new gym. So, no, that would go down considerably. That should be a real point.
So we're down, we can still accomplish what we want.
Right, exactly, we could get, we could have our cake and eat it too.
What was the prior estimate?
Like three and a half.
Yeah, that's, that's...
And they said they should, I mean, they said pretty confidently that they can make it work around two.
And that's what out, that's the estimate for we've ever done any fundraising or anything along those lines.
Yeah.
And, and we, we should say that this isn't, for the football field, this, that's, um, essentially stripping off the middle twenty yards, building up a crown, 'cause the outside of the field is in which, build up that crown, bring in the dirt, reseed it, redo the, what we need to on the sprinkler system. Then the track, the track's gonna be a million dollars, but there's no, there's no way around it to get the track that we want. And then that still leaves, that leaves four hundred thousand for playground. And I think they did not see the thing that was, that was, they actually thought that was very easily applicable.
Yep.
Are you guys wanting a motion to hire one of these firms tonight?
You guys were ready for that, if you wanted a committee to, um, committee or have a, and take the recommendation of the committee? Or have another board meeting after you've digested?
I'm not comfortable with these votes.
So basically, um, so yeah, I didn't know if, um, you guys would be ready tonight 'cause really none of us have a recommendation of one or the other.
Okay.
So then... I do then, to move on, don't forget about this part, but, um, we did do a request for qual, qualification, construction manager at risk, and that's what this Pitts one is. So the only one I got, if you would want to, you know, just make the motion approving that, then we have that part, or we can do both at the same time. But that is what this one is, is then, um, and basically this is to help, so if they wanna bid on some of the project areas, they can, if they had it, we had to do it, go do it this way.
This is to get the real wor, real-world numbers of what a session would cost.
And they basically work together. And so Pitts has worked with both of the engineers to make the project.
Did Pitts have a recommendation?
No.
When he dropped these off, I said, so now I'm like, how do we, like, what's happening?
And you won't give them, say, a report, will you?
I said that now. Do you have a recommendation?
I would vote DGR. Uh, just meeting with both of them, I would recommend DGR, only because they've been able to work with schools and stay in a budget and when they hit on that, I think that was kinda right over the head, so, I mean, I, either one, I don't, I mean, Pitts has worked with, and I think either one are good, but I think DGR would be more comfortable with bringing people in. I know like he said that you could do some of the engineering stuff, um, like bringing in dirt, bringing in different stuff like that where he want, like, he, if, he wanted to work with the community to be able to make it work, you know, and stay within our budget and what we needed to be, so. That would be my recommendation, but if you guys wanna take some time and go through it, I mean, both the same kinda thing, but one talks more about that, I would say, that's kinda my only thing that stood out.
And if we approve one of these, it doesn't mean we're moving ahead in the direction.
No, it would just mean that we're just gonna start getting some estimates and getting some stuff ready so we can kinda, so we can make our committees and then get through, like, get a plan of what we wanna do and then bring it to the community of what our actual plan is.
So truly you want us to, to try to come to a vote tonight? Because otherwise, we're not gonna have time to get our committee and stuff before the November.
Yes.
I probably have to abstain. Trent Bruce with DGR has been my commander, I've known him since he was about nineteen years old in college. He's a small-town guy from out in Hot Springs that is obviously killing it with DGR. He's no BS, straight up. I talked to him, you know, told him we had this project going on and, you know, our pockets weren't Danny Sanford's type pockets, you know, and he's like, you can do a ton with a million dollars if you don't gold plate everything, you know. We want to have something very, very nice when we're done. But, you know, you can do really nice and it doesn't have to be over the top. And I think that's where, I have no doubt Trent would find a way to, to make it happen for a small town, 'cause he's a small-town kid.
And he matched in the line, like, he walked around with the stool, the ESPN guy didn't walk around at all. And said he looked at facilities, but like, he, the DGR guy really brought in like the playground and making that work. He's gonna send us different, um, playground sets to where we can show the teachers and what they would want. I mean, he was, he was a lot more thorough than the ESPN guy, so.
So your recommendation is what?
DGR, for engineering.
Okay.
And then Pitts for the construction manager.
Okay.
And again, another thing, we're gonna build a track, you know? But this can get us moving forward and get the numbers, get what it's gonna look like, what we're gonna have to do, um, before we do anything. Maybe when we get the stuff and it's just absolutely not gonna work out, but maybe we can get a playground, um, right now and then at least get something out of it, um...
It helps give us answers.
Well, it just gives us an answer, it gives us real-life numbers too, where we can actually work with something and we need to take something out or we can add something. Um, it just gives us a better overview of what we can do and when we actually bring it to the committer, the community, it's not gonna be just nothing, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to talk about, hey, this is what it's gonna cost. This is how your taxes are gonna go down, um, this is what we're gonna do with the facilities and everything like that, so. I think just having a set plan and having these guys go forward, I think it'd be...
So, uh, DGR was also willing to take all the mannequin stuff that we have paid for.
Okay.
So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, they'll be able to use everything.
All the rest of it.
Especially as far as setting up the track, um, in most cost effectively. So I, I don't think you're, you're voting to spend money right now. You're, you're voting to accept who they're recommending if we go forward. There's no cost incurred with what we're doing right now. Um, we're just establishing who is your engineer and, and people who will be overseeing the construction.
I will, um, make a motion to take Mr. Donovan's recommendation. Um, and hire Pitts and DGR. Do I have a second? Second, second by Ashley. Jamie's going to extend. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those in favor say aye. Motion carried. Do we have an executive session? Do we have an executive session?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, at this time, we'll go into executive session. Section one personnel, section six perfection, uh, six twenty-four, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Jamie, question? Thank you guys, thanks Jim, have a great night.